Listen to the 13th.
No, no. Sorry, just talking about something else. Okay, hopefully, hopefully you'll be able to get in next time. Doc, I see Nate's now on.
Dr. Dunn's on.
Oh, there he is. I see him.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Not only did the Supreme Court overrule the executive.
Hey Jeff, can you hear, can you see me? It's Nate.
You're on mute, Jeff.
Hey Tony.
Hi.
So Nate, we can hear you, but all we see is a still image of Walker.
Okay, let me figure this out. There we go.
Yep, now you're there.
Better? There we go.
Yeah.
Unless you want to see Walker, that's, that's fine with me too.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Doc.
Okay.
Hey Marcia.
Hi. I'm just trying this out, yeah.
If they can see, but they can't hear anything else?
No, they can't now.
They can hear you now. No, I don't want them to hear you. No? No.
Jeff's on mute, or Mitch is on mute.
Okay, now we're, we'll call a meeting order. And just gonna take roll call.
Okay. Bastin?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Dahl?
Here.
Dunn? Timid?
Here.
Lindsey? Staphus? And Sullivan?
Here.
Do that, we're gonna do a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of Canada.
One nation.
One nation.
God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Justice. And justice for all.
Okay, first item we need to do is the approval of the virtual board meeting due to the emergency needs. Does somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Gary Sullivan and Tony Dahl.
Any questions or comments? Let's do the roll, please.
Okay, roll call Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yeah.
Lindsey?
I said he's muted.
Lindsey, yes? Okay. Staphus?
Yes.
Bastin?
Yes. Okay, Dr. Lindsey, your microphone is muted right now, I don't know if you can unmute to speak?
Dr. Lindsey, it's up in the corner of your, right hand corner of your picture, there should be three little dots. If you click on those three dots, it'll say unmute. Or down in the corner of your screen, in the left hand corner of your big screen.
Mr. Wainwright, you can click on his, the three dots that you see, and you should be able to unmute him yourself.
Okay, there we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good.
So you were a yes to that vote, Doc?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to board communications received, did anybody receive anything?
No.
No.
I did not have any emails except for one. And I guess you wanna read it?
One email sent. "I just wanted to take a moment to thank Jeff Bastin for his many, many years on the board. I believe at times the district stakeholders are unaware of the sacrifices that a business owner potentially makes to serve on the school board, yet Jeff has done it for many years. I also applaud him for the time he spends during working hours talking to stakeholders about issues in person, as he is probably the most visible and available member of the board we have. This takes tremendous sacrifice from Jeff as a business owner in both lost time and potentially lost customers on contentious issues. Jeff has also served the board very well the last two years as its president, leading us through multiple contentious issues, the beginning of a building project, and multiple legal questions and issues with various subjects that have arisen. To say it was a busy two years for the president would be an understatement, but Jeff has always done what is asked by the board and always gotten the board answers for the questions. So I just want to say on behalf of myself and hopefully the district shareholders as well, thank you Jeff Bastin for your commitment to bettering the Mineral Point School District and the experience of its staff and students. Sincerely, Andy Bush."
Thank you, Andy.
I would echo that.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Amen.
Thank you, Jeff.
Um, okay, no other citizens communications? To approval of the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
Second now.
Any other comments or questions?
Lindsey?
Yes.
Staphus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yeah.
Bastin?
Yes. Um, we'll move into the preliminary budget report.
I'll see if I can pull this up and make this work. Hopefully you see a budget comparison from 1920 to 2021. And I see a thumbs up from somebody that they, they are seeing that screen. They think. So, in the left hand column was our last year's budget, our revenues and expenditures, total revenue of thirteen million, one hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred seventy dollars. We ran a balanced budget, it was presented as balanced. As a matter of fact, at the end of this fiscal year, we'll, we'll have a surplus of money because of some expenses that aren't being paid out. Most obvious, some of our utilities, heat, electricity, water, aren't being paid out, some of the gas, we're not purchasing gas for buses at this point in time, or a lot of equipment, so I am pretty sure that we'll have a surplus at the end of this year. The preliminary budget in the right hand column for fiscal year 2021 is before you, anticipated revenues of thirteen million, sixty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. And kinda rolling over, rolling forward, some of the recommendations from the personnel committee. We know currently the expenditures are going to be higher. Right now, we're showing a deficit of thirty-five thousand four hundred twenty-three. This is before any of the building administrators are really able to get in and look at budget requests for next year, make some decisions and recommendations, what needs to be put on hold, or taken off the list completely. I can also say that we are, we are estimating kind of the property tax monies that we will make on the revenue side, and on the expense side, some of the salaries, we know we have three retirees, and their salaries are in the expenditures, so there would be some room to turn that deficit into a surplus, or make it a balanced budget when we hire replacement teachers. So again, as a, as a first look at what the budget would be as presented, it's sitting currently at a thirty-five thousand dollar deficit. Any questions anybody would have on this initial look through?
Mitch, on your capital projects, under the expenditures, I see we decreased it by sixty thousand from nineteen twenty.
Yes.
Is, uh, is that, has that been kind of the, the trend, I mean, we just, we roll in what we can, and then, and all the surplus monies, we, we add that Fund forty-six.
That is, that is correct, that, that some of those monies go in those locations, a lot of it is gonna be down. If you look under the property tax levy, Fund thirty-eight and Fund thirty-nine are pulled out now, and there's a, a lot of the referendum monies are in that location. And if you look at debt service under expenditures, the, the jump from five hundred ninety-one thousand to nine hundred and forty-one thousand is some of the initial referendum expenditures that will be coming. So it kinda helps, that kinda explains some of those, where some of those monies are shifting.
Okay, from, from memory Mitch, like the, oh, the eighteen, nineteen budget, do you recall where we were at? Sorry, I sprung that on you, I probably should've called you earlier, for, for capital projects.
I, I do not, but I could find that information out, send that to you tomorrow.
Sure, okay.
Wasn't Larry? Remember originally we had taken that out? And then we put it back when we, when info came from the state.
Right, I know, I know we did add to it, Jeff. And certainly you work with Roger on that, correct Mitch, and is Roger okay with the two hundred thousand?
Yes.
The difference in the property tax on the revenue side Mitch, from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one, is that, is that just merely the reassessment, or is that some referendum money that's gonna be included?
That'll be, that'll be referendum monies that are included. The, the new assessed values, I don't know that are, are out, you know, to that extent, usually we get that information. Last year, no, it was October when we got that information as to what we were gonna be expecting as far as property values and the, and that assessed value.
Okay, and if, if our expended, our expenditures are higher, the, the state equalization aid should be higher than two. Am I correct Mitch? I mean, the more we spend, the more we get, that's always kind of the common, the common idea of schools.
If, if the more you get, the more you get from the state, the less you can get in property taxes, or vice versa, they, they try to kind of hold that equal, or you know, that percentage kind of equal. So if, if you get more from one, the other one takes away from you.
Okay.
So it's, it's not a lot of win-win, although with referendum expenditures coming now, the following year then we get the reimbursement for that.
So that four million five hundred and eight thousand will be higher next year?
It, it, it's, it's potentially going to be higher next year, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, based on referendum expenses. You'll get the one year, the, 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 the operating referendum, that money will kick in, and once we tap into that, you know, so then we would get some aid on that.
But then, I think what Larry's getting at is, is that's roughly five hundred thousand higher under the property taxes for twenty twenty-one. So twenty-one, twenty-two, that four point five million should go up another hundred and fifty thousand or so, if we get our thirty percent like usual, that's what.
Yeah, potentially.
So the next year, we will, should see that increase.
Correct.
Okay.
I see you left the open enrollment, I saw one last question, Jeff and Mitch, I see you got the open enrollment the same moving forward. Did you leave the, um, our full-time students, our resident students, the same then also?
The, our student count? Yes, we, we've taken this year's student count and used that moving forward, so without any additional students or additional open enrollment in, we kind of keep that flat. And you, that, you have to remember that that is a, a three-year rolling average, so if we add thirty students, we're really only gonna be able to add, say ten, because they average, they average out your enrollment over three.
I understand.
Hey, can I make a request? It, it may just be me, but I, I think it would be easier to hear one person talking and if everyone else was muted.
I don't know how to mute, but I'll be muted.
Oh, okay. I think it would eliminate some background noise if everyone was muted until they, until it was their turn to speak. Just a suggestion.
You're coming in good, Dr. Dunn, is everybody here, is he okay?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes. Yes.
Jeff, you're coming in good, Mitch, you're coming in good.
Questions on? Yeah, do we have other questions on that? Let me. If not, let's move on to the budget update.
Looking at a comparison, um, a year ago, we had spent about sixty-two and a half percent of our budget at this point in the year, looking at this year. I was a little shocked when I saw this number, we're at sixty-four point seven, almost sixty-five percent, so a little bit higher. But I know prior to spring break coming in, there was a request that they finalize any kind of purchases for this year, so I think there was maybe a few extra purchase orders that had come in, not knowing, you know, if we're gonna be back in two weeks or not, so we're relatively close within three percentage points of, of where we were a year ago to where we are now. So, and like I said, I, I'm anticipating that we'll come in with a budget surplus with, with our expenses being down.
Okay, any, any comments or questions?
Nope.
We'll move on to the postponed Spanish.
More informational, the Spanish teacher, Mrs. Wallene, was going to be taking a couple of trips this year, and in light of all of the health concerns around the world, she has postponed those trips. I believe she has been in contact with the airlines, and flight vouchers can be given out to any families that were planning on taking the trip. Jeff, were you going with them?
I wasn't.
Okay. Okay, but they're, they're able to get a travel voucher for a, a different time, so, to take that trip, so there isn't a loss of money, but one trip is going to Spain, and obviously, that's not a place anybody wants to be in the very near future, so she just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that they were postponing those trips for this upcoming summer.
Just a comment, I got a travel voucher from Delta for two years after we canceled the trip.
Very nice.
Yep.
Okay, let's move on to items for action.
Jeff, excuse me, but I also wanted to let everybody know that the middle school, the Washington DC trip is postponed until next summer.
Okay. Uh, approval of the waiver of instructs instructional hours is our first item.
There are a lot of school districts around the area that are asking for and applying for a waiver of instructional minutes. Attached is Governor Evers' Emergency Order Number Ten. And the DPI, in essence, will be granting waivers of any school requesting it. And I'm asking that the school board consider going ahead and requesting the waiver of instructional minutes. The difference is, we're not saying we're not going to continue our virtual schooling. As a matter of fact, we want to continue that for as long as we possibly can to provide whatever educational opportunities for our students to help meet the challenging times for our own purposes and our own data collection. In case we were to ever use this for something as simple as a bad weather day, as opposed to a pandemic need. But we know that there might be a time when they come in and say we're shutting schools down, and I think they would probably still require us to ask for and have the waiver granted, even though we're not meeting, you know, we would, we would never meet the total hours of instruction. We are doing as much as we can down that path, so I, I would ask support in going ahead and filing for the, the waiver through the state.
I move that we approve the waiver on instructional hours.
All second.
Is it your intent Mitch, to get the minutes required through virtual learning, is that even possible? If we, if we never, if we don't come back through the end of the year?
If we're not told we have to shut down, I would like us to go as close to that May twenty-second date as we can. We would probably stop it a little bit sooner so we could try to set some kind of collection up of books and equipment that we would have, you know, get things checked back into the school before Memorial Day weekend, but, but I would like us to get as close to that date as possible with our virtual learning. We're not required an eight-hour instruction day in school equal an eight-hour instruction day virtually. But those minutes, in essence, would would count, you know, you know, the day requirement's gone, but it's almost like they're going back to, if you've had virtual learning on all these days, we're, we would grant you that time as if it was an eight-hour day. But, but yes, I would like to get us as, as late into the spring as we possibly can with virtual learning.
Mitch, what's taken? What's, uh, what, the minutes that we have gained so far, are we, are we one for one, as if we were in school, or how far behind are we? With the, the middle school through the high school? I'm talking minutes per day.
Right, we would probably be, I would say we'd probably, you know, we're probably getting a half a day. You know, with, with direct staff members, you know, that's not taking into consider, in consideration any office hours somebody might have, you know, a little bit later in the day where you might gain another hour during the course of the day, but you know, we're, we're providing as much as we possibly can at this time.
All right, are you aware of any schools that are instructing enough minutes to get a, how many minutes are in a day to get that, to get that equivalent on a per day basis, is, is that, is that even possible, I guess that's my question.
I'm not aware of anybody that's doing that, and I would say that it would be almost impossible in, in a virtual environment, because that would, you know, I'd have to have, your son would have to be available for seven or eight hours a day so that his math teacher could come on, you know, from eight to eight forty-five and almost follow our normal schedule. And, and virtual, virtual learning isn't necessarily set up for that kind of environment, or that atmosphere, that, that's just not conducive for that kind of a learning environment?
I understand, and then in the elementary school, we're not gaining really any minutes, are we Mitch?
Um, they, they have less required of them on a year-to-year basis, and our elementary staff are either providing some virtual opportunities and connections, or they're providing paper pencil connections and trying to phone students in different classes. So they are still at the elementary, they're still trying to provide the, a level of education that allows for the best connection with, with students.
All right, and I've got one final question on this, and then, and then I'll be quiet, what, what are we gonna do, I mean, has there been any discussion, not only us, but, uh, schools around the country? Will, will they just double up next year Mitch, on, on the curriculum that was missed this year?
There would, there would be a need to obviously review. So, you know, if it's a student going from fourth grade to fifth grade, the fifth grade teachers would have kind of back up and, and do some review for those students and, and, you know, what was covered, you know, near the end of that fifth grade year, if it was, you know, especially, I think, like a math skill, because that is so sequential and you build on, you know, one thing after another. You know, and then the same thing would, would need to take place here, that, that we would have to do, we would have to back up what we're trying to instruct at the beginning of the year to the best of our ability, and, and provide opportunities to, to review and, and learn maybe for the first time some of that material, just to make sure our students are prepared for what comes next.
Sure.
I got a question for you Mitch.
Yes.
I've heard the state of Indiana is not going back to school this year, have you heard any word of any possibility of Wisconsin not going back? I'm specifically interested in our elementary school project, that if we could actually get a word that we're not going back to school, that we get going on that project as soon as possible.
I, I have received a letter from the state superintendent who sympathizes with every school district in that the uncertainty is, is not good for any of us. Her recommendation, while she can't say you're coming back on this date, and she hasn't come out and said, yeah, if we're not back in school by the tenth of May, we're just shutting it down, I've not heard any of those things. She has said, in her recommendation, for any kind of long-range planning, to assume that we would not be back until the fall of the year. In regards to the building project, Roger and I had an online conference with HSR and Crane. In regards to the building project, Roger and I had an online conference with HSR and Kramer's today. And that question came up about, you know, when can you start? Because we were actually hoping they would start in April, no matter what. They are running into subcontractors who are having issues with some of the supply chains. So some of the subcontractors who are waiting for materials or the procurement of materials are being held up. So they have not given us a firm, here's when we're going to get started moving the ground and getting the foundation ready. So a lot of things up in the air still.
It's not a topic right now. I guess I got a lot of other questions, but that ain't the topic to discuss that on right now.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any other comments on the waiver?
Dahl.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yeah.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Daphus.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Chambers.
Sorry, yes, yes, sorry.
Yes. Passed up in zero. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of contracts for 2021.
The personnel committee met. Notes had been shared out, the CPI is being reported out at 1.81%. I've got that from several sources, including the school's attorney. And the personnel committee is recommending using the 1.81% increase for the teacher contracts for the 2021 school year.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Done. You want a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
The increase in salaries Mitch, is that all reflected in your 2021 budget comparison?
Yes.
So with the 1.81%, the, every teacher will get a step increase, is that the way it'll be?
The 1.81% is applied kind of like to the sales, each of the sales on that salary schedule. And then when we get a better picture of what our budget is, if you remember on that, then it lays out, it would be steps if there's budget money available, then it would be lane changes if there's budget money available. And, you know, there's a series of steps that goes down, but the very first one at the top is the CPI, would be just a CPI increase on a per-cell basis.
And there is no step increases on tonight's agenda, correct?
No, we're not, I'm not asking any approval of that as of right now.
Okay. I mean, in the past, haven't we done that in conjunction with the CPI? I'm just asking a question.
Last year, we were a little behind schedule. It was a month later when we brought this forward, but we need to actually get teacher contracts out to them at this time of year so they can be returned. And at least knowing what the CPI increase would be, or if that's the approved increase, then we could at least move forward and get the contract sent out that way.
Thank you.
You actually may be coming back for more besides the 1.81?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there any other questions? Question then, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Daphus.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dahl.
Yes.
Bastin.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of summer contracts.
This is a different request because we've always run summer school. And in the current situation, I'm not sure if we'd be allowed to run summer school. And, but we need to be prepared in the likelihood that this would be allowable. So current staff, any current staff members teaching basically get their salary per DM down to an hourly basis, that's how they're paid. The request would be to increase any non-staff member from a $20 an hour to $25 an hour. This rate has not changed in at least the last six years, maybe even longer. I know when I inherited the job of a summer school coordinator, that was the dollar amount that was being paid out. And it hasn't changed in any of the years that I am aware of. And I know at times it may be difficult to fill all of our summer school positions. And we need to hire staff members that are not necessarily mineral point teachers. And moving that from $20 an hour to $25 an hour certainly help us fill some of those positions if needed.
Mitch, how long has it been at 20?
At least six years or longer.
You have comparatives for other districts paying summer contracts?
I can get them if you'd like me to, I don't have them currently.
I just think if we're wondering if we're being, if we need to be competitive to recruit teachers to teach summer school, we need to know what rate we need in order to be competitive.
I can certainly get that information and share it with the board when I get it.
That's a good point. How many hours typically does a summer school season entail Mitch?
What do we? About 60 hours, somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 hours.
Okay. And how many of these employees would be non-staff? How many bodies would you be talking about roughly Mitch?
We thought there were six people. Mr. Renwick, I think, is online, he might be able to you know, hear as well, Mr. Renwick.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. The majority of our teachers at the elementary are mineral point teachers, they're all certified. A few of them are assistants who have a teacher's license. I think we generally have maybe two on average at the elementary that are outside the district.
Okay, so not a big number, Matt, at all?
Correct, not a big number, no.
Okay. I'm okay with waiting a month on this and just getting a little more information Mitch. In a month from now, we may know more about our upcoming summer school program too.
I make a motion, we table this item till next month and find out more information about competitive salaries and what's going on for the summer.
I'll second that.
Mitch, is that a feasible timeline for you to set up your summer school staff?
It's, you know, yeah, it would just be a very small number of non-staff members we would be talking to. And right now, they would be coming in and would be being paid the $20 an hour as is. If they've agreed to come in and work with us this summer, they're already agreeing at this $20 an hour. So their pay would be no different from last summer to this summer if they're agreeing to come back to us.
Sure.
Okay, so the contracts will move forward with the default being 20 an hour. But if we table this, then next month, we would consider increasing it to maintain a competitive fair market value.
Yes.
Accurate?
Yes.
Comments or questions?
Okay, Lindsay?
Yes.
Daphus.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Bastin.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the additive contracts.
We would ask that the additive salary schedule would also look at increasing the CPI level, the 1.81%. This is also, I believe, figured in, I believe Marsha figured this in to the salaries under the expenditure column in the budget, preliminary budget proposal, so it would already have been in that area. So this would be our coaches, our advisors, you know, from FFA and Skills USA to our softball, football coaches.
I'll move to approve the additive contracts with CPI.
I'll second it.
Has this been common? Maybe Jeff, you could help me, has this been common in the past six years or so? I know we had some discussion, hasn't been that long ago, on the additive salaries contracts, I should say.
It's a good question. I don't recall us changing them every year.
Well, this, can I go Jeff? My whole thing is, I look at this, I look at this agenda, guys, and I see basically every action is increase this, increase that. But we all understand we're in a time right now where there's so much uncertainty, we don't know what's going on, but yet it just seems like we're increasing everything. And I'm just, I'm really a little puzzled as to how we're doing all this. I understand the teachers' contracts have to be taken, I get that, the very first one we did. But a lot of this other stuff, I'm just a little puzzled by right now with the uncertainty of everything going on, why we're just doing it all.
Part of it deals with the timing of what schools are required to do and when we're required to do that. So when you come back and you start talking about some of the different contracts, this is the time of year where, I mean, the board has certainly voted to hold the additive salary schedule as is. I think that's happened in the past. But this is the time when those decisions have to be made so that we can issue contracts with with proper dollar amounts or salary figures or whatever the case, this is a requirement that we have to live with as well.
I understand Mitch, and I completely see what you're saying here. But let's forget about what's going on in the world and talk about the contracts themselves. If you have an individual that wants to sign up to be the football coach, I'm just using the number of $3,000 a year, that's what it is, I mean, he got the CPI on their on their teacher salary, if they're a coach from our district, of course. You know, either they think $3,000 is enough for the football culture or it's not, I mean, I I'm not in favor of an increase on the additive contracts. I think the fees, the rates should be set for the coaches and the advisor. And if they don't think it's enough, then I guess we got to address address every position differently, I guess. It is a healthy amount, you know, do you know the total amount of the additive contracts Mitch?
I do not have that in front of me at this time.
Is it over 100,000?
Yeah, it's over that, I think it's closer to 300,000.
Yeah. That's where I stand.
Okay. You might think it's a healthy amount, but I, you know, if you compare it to school districts around the area, you know, I can tell you that we're not leading the pack on that. It was reduced a number of years ago to our coaches, they took a salary reduction. And I think most of you know that what you make and the amount of hours that you put in does not average out to be a whole lot.
Do you have problems getting coaches, Vicky?
No, I wouldn't say problems getting coaches, you know, maybe problems getting the right coaches.
Do you think that has anything to do with that?
A couple of years ago, I had to fill a position, I didn't have any applicants for a varsity position. And I had to hire somebody with very limited experience and, you know, the seasons did not go very well.
Ms. Dahl, do you think that has anything to do with the money? Or just no interest in the position?
I'd say it's a little bit of both with the amount of time that you put in and what you actually make. You know, if you would, if coaches would write down the amount of hours that they put in and, you know, you're looking at, some of our coaches spend all day Saturdays away from their families coaching our kids. You know, it's your decision, but it is a thankless job. And for what we pay our coaches and the CPI increase, what would that be for a football coach? For Larry, you said $3,000, times one point.
Is it 60 bucks?
Yeah, $60.
Actually, it's about 6,000, isn't it Vicky? For the football coach varsity?
It's 120 bucks then.
I'd have to look at the salary schedule, Angie, do you have the salary schedule handy?
Yes.
I don't, we don't have a head coach that makes $6,000.
No, we'd have all kinds of people applying for our coaching positions if we did, I can tell you that.
And I don't know what the head coaches make. And it doesn't matter, and you really answered my question, it's not a lot of money either way. And so if you have problems filling a position, Vicky, then again, I I think we look at every position individually, if you bring it to us and say, hey, the football programs, we're not paying enough, I guess, and then we discuss it. Because there are some positions that take more work than others. And I think some of the contracts are paid healthy, very healthy.
Well, again, I mean, you know, I'm sensitive to the fact, and I think Gary makes a good point, you know, we don't want to keep increasing and increasing and increasing every time, you know, with a fixed budget. That kind of stuff gets us in trouble. And I think we should keep a close eye on any of those votes. But at the same time, I think we as a board have an obligation to do two things. One is, we got to maintain the cost of living for our staff. You know, Consumer Price Index is, you know, basically measuring the general increase of the cost of general things you need to live. And I think we as a board should consider costing living increase as common sense if we can afford it. And, you know, it's not like we're dealing with a $300,000 deficit right now. You know, I think our conversation would be different. I think the second thing we need to do is just be sensitive to fair market value. You know, I think that in these discussions, we were lacking, how do we compare amongst our peers in the area? And I think that, you know, like we always talk about, you know, we'd love to pay our staff, number one, on the scale, but we often can't, but we want to try to fall at least in the middle somewhere or a little bit above, and that kind of information is helpful when making these kind of decisions. So I just want to make those two points before we vote.
1.8% increase on $3,000 is $54. And I think from coaching salaries I've seen, being a teacher for many years, there aren't a lot of coaches that are making $3,000. Especially, and definitely not six. So you have to take it at that aspect, like Dr. Dunn said, 1.8% is what costs are going up, the consumer index. $54 on $3,000.
So if we're saying it's not that much, doesn't that work both ways then? Just, that's just my thoughts. It's only $54, so in a total of $300,000, what was that, $5,400?
Is that accurate? Total $300,000 for additive contracts? That's a lot of money.
That seems like a high number.
Real high number for additive contracts.
It's the point of, I think the coaches would feel appreciated for the work that they put in. I mean, we've got people that have been coaching in our district for multiple years. You know, I mean, yeah, you can look at it, it's only $54, but you know, I see it every day, how much time these coaches put in. And some of the stuff that they have to put up with. But this is your decision, so I'm done talking.
We're going to wait for Angie to come back so we know what we're talking about accurately.
It's about $120,000 for all of the coaches.
But the analytics and all that stuff, isn't it?
Right, it takes into consideration any of the PEP ban, the FFA, the National Honor Society, student counts, all of those things play into that additive contract as well.
Maybe we need to look at some of the advisor salaries compared to the coaches' salaries.
The entire additive contract sum is $120,000, Vicky?
For the coaches, I know.
I did the math, and that is $2,120 for 1.8% increase. I have no idea what the advisor pay scale is.
Angie Hubert just went to try and track that information down quick, so hopefully she'll be right back.
I don't know if the information makes much of a difference. I'd rather vote, I'll support him.
Well, we should know how much we're spending.
It's $120,000 for all of them.
It's $145,666. It's not going to talk in line either way.
You're talking about $2,610.
Thank you.
Roughly. That's on $145,000. I didn't get the ending amount there, Jeff.
$1,621.98.
On my side, I'm going to report $2,100 is not chump change.
It's spread out between a lot of people.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you need to understand, I think everybody's missing the point where where their primary income has been raised by the CPI. And this is a secondary source of income.
For some.
I think we're missing the point. I'm not supporting it.
Yep. Yeah, motion by Erin and second by Dr. Lindsey. Any other comments? Let's call a question, please.
Okay, Dr. Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Daphus?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Basty?
I'm voting no.
Okay, we'll move on to support staff wages. I had shared a salary schedule, and it kind of showed, it compared the starting pay for the support staff in compared to schools in our area. And then it compared, and we were in this, the schools in the CISA, I believe we were 22nd out of 27 schools as far as starting pay was concerned. And then if you looked at the top end of the salary schedule, I want to say we were somewhere in that 4 to 6 range. And then when you narrow that group to schools more closely geographic to us, we were the starting scale out of eight schools, I believe we were seven on the starting wage, and on the top end, I believe we were second. And I don't know that there's been an adjustment to the support staff salary schedule. And I would propose, as a starting point, we look at adding an hour, a dollar an hour to that salary structure. On the bottom end, that would move us in that larger group, it would move us from 22nd to 18 out of 27 schools. On the top end, we would not move. Our ranking would not move on the top end. The top end of our salary schedule would be $19 an hour. That would not move our support staff on the top end anywhere on that ranking. Do I like to make a motion?
Do you have that schedule, Mitch? Can you show that for us? I seem not to have it. I did get the 19. What is the beginning dollar per hour amount, Mitch?
So, do you see it on the screen now, Larry?
I do, thank you.
Okay. $1,350 is our beginning wage, and that puts us at 22nd. And that's pretty good, 4 to 6, we're 5 at the top end, at $18 an hour. That put us fifth in that bigger pool of all schools in the CISA that reported that information. If I go to a smaller ranking, our starting pay puts us, what have we got, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 13, puts us at 10. And our top end puts us at number 2. If we added a dollar an hour to that salary structure, if we went to $1,450 an hour at our starting pay, we would not move because Cuba City is starting at $1,453. And if we went to 19 at the top end, we would not move. North Crawford offers $2,193 at their top end.
I wonder why Finnamores are both the same, 1718 for starting, both sides.
And Peck is the same. And Ridge, I don't know if that's...
I don't think something's right there.
Mitch, can you explain the range between starting and top?
We are the, and support staff members that come in with no experience, come in and they make $13.50 an hour. So if it's an instructional assistant, if it's a office assistant, that starting pay starts at $1,350. And the top end is at $18 an hour. There's a series of steps that increase at 50 cents an hour from year to year to year. So if we were to bump up that starting pay from $1,350 an hour to $1,450 an hour and carry it through that salary schedule, that would put the top of that salary schedule for support staff at $19 an hour.
Right, I get the proposed change. But you're saying that the rate that we offer supporting staff, new hires, varies between $1,350 and 18 based on...
No.
So the 18 is the ceiling?
Is the floor?
Hit all their steps and they've gotten all their raises?
Or, yes.
I believe they move according to years of experience, Dr. Dunn. I don't know if Mitch has that up above, but I think it's in sequential groups of years of experience is how they boost up their pay.
Yeah, so so if you look at like North Crawford, they have a range as well. So North Crawford starts people at $1,675, and their top end after people have been there through years. So that's why ours was reported out the same way. What was, what's the range of pay that you give? So CISA, the CISA schools that asked for this information, it was reported to them, so if you start here, you're starting at $1,350. If you've been here for X number of years, you're making $18 an hour.
And you can't go above that currently?
CPI. If the board approves CPI, then somebody might be making $19.32, and they're off of that pay scale, so they would get a CPI increase on their pay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
How would you implement this, Mitch? Would next year, your support staff, everybody automatically get a dollar an hour raise then, or would this be just for the new hires?
I would recommend that we give everybody a dollar an hour pay raise for next year.
Do you have any idea what the number figures of that would be?
On the I'll call it salary, sorry, on the pay itself, it is right around $20,000. There would be some social security, you know, increases in some of that, but it would be kind of in that 20 to $25,000 range.
Just increase of basically for the $1 an hour raise, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then I've got $108,000 that we approved for the teacher contracts, and then another $2,500 for the additive contracts. So our numbers are starting to add up pretty quick here. That's all I got to say.
Built into that budget, right?
The support staff is not. But yes, the teacher contracts, those things were built into that budget. The insurance increase that we'll talk about in a minute is built into that budget.
So actually, Gary, just so you know, everything that has been approved so far was in the budget.
In the budget, yep, I understand that.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Is this item in the budget?
No.
That's what I thought.
The support staff recommendation is not in that preliminary budget request at this time.
Mitch, when's the last time we increased this pay range?
At least four years ago. I was not a part of any of this when it came in, so it's been at least four years, I guess, according to Jeff.
Wasn't it, Larry, three or four years ago, before Luke left?
The actual step increases started, I think, the last year. The previous administrator was here. Jeff, does that sound about right? Because we never had step increases for the support staff. Oh, I can tell you're right, about four years ago, I'd say. The I mean, if you just did rough math, average, if our support staff is averaging $15 an hour, and I'm not saying they are, a buck an hour, that's a 7.5% raise. Seems very generous. And again, I'm all about paying paying what employees are worth, you know, compared to regarding their years of service and performance, of course. I have no problem with that, but to give a blanket 7.5% raise across the board...
Hey, Mitch? Is it possible to reevaluate what our surplus is this summer? And revisit this issue at that time when we're deciding what to do with the budget surplus?
I wish I could say yes. Unfortunately, whatever surplus money we have available at the end of the 1920 school year needs to be spent out in some way, shape, or form in the 1920 school year. If we try to carry money forward into next year, then the state will look at that and say, you did not need that money, and will reduce your state aid in the upcoming year. So typically, that money's either gone like to a Fund 46 account or to our fund balance to make sure that we're maintaining the proper fund balance amount, that percent. So as much as I would love to say we could do that financially, business-wise, that's not allowable in a school district.
Okay, that makes sense. I'm sensing that, you know, we're hesitant to press the budget here with too many salary increases. And I share those concerns. At the same time, you know, you had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that you're anticipating a surplus both from decreased utilities expenses, including bus fuel. Maybe you had mentioned some maybe other things that you're not going to have to pay for that maybe were in contingency. And then, you know, there may be some cost savings in some new higher teacher contracts. Do you have an estimated dollar number so that we don't, you know, try to overspend an anticipated surplus right now?
We have asked, we've asked teachers, anybody that would have had a purchase order, kind of in essence, hanging out there waiting for final approval, you know, if we were coming back to school on April 6th, I needed I needed to have these supplies ordered so that by the middle of April, I would have art supplies or steel for welding or wood for construction, you know, so there were some purchase orders that are kind of, I say, hanging there waiting for final approval that at this point, more than likely will not go through. So the district would recapture some of those monies. There is a technology budget within that preliminary budget report that we might be able to, we've done this in the past, we've pre-purchased a lot of things. So we might be able to pre-purchase some technology out of this year's budget and not have an impact on the 2021 budget. That will help us bring that back into better alignment. So we would certainly look at... Trying to make the most of the surplus now to help offset expenses in any way we can. For next school year, but salaries is not one of those areas that we could do that.
I just want to clarify the because Larry touched on it. Up until four years ago, the support staff basically only got CPA or CPI or whatever we decide. But we now have a step program for them, correct?
Correct.
So and the step is roughly fifty cents every year?
Yes.
So they will get fifty cents. Okay, did that make sense?
Is that on ten-year, a ten-year schedule to Jeff, that step schedule?
It sounds, yeah, it's either a nine or a ten-year step schedule.
I kind of I kind of agree here with Larry in that. I either would suggest that we we table this or maybe consider fifty cents because. They're already going to get fifty cents across the board. Anybody that is not on the top step. Only a suggestion.
What we could do, Jeff, and I I would really have to. Dig down to find some support for this too, is maybe just go from eighteen to nineteen on the top end. That would reward our ten-year teachers.
Our top step isn't really low, Larry. It's the bottom. Our starting wage. And that's the same same we caught up a little bit with with the teaching staff. But our starting wage with our teachers is actually low also.
It would be interesting to see how many we start at the thirteen, the thirteen fifty, whatever that number is. Mitch, do you know that number? I I can't imagine we start many there.
I'm sorry, Mitch. I was just gonna say, I believe. Each of the assistants that we have hired since I have been at Mineral Point all started at thirteen fifty, all started at the base pay. And I think we've hired three. I I take that back. There was one one that came in with different experience, but the majority of them that have been hired for special education. Have started at the base.
But if they have experience, Angie, you take that into consideration, don't you?
We do. And the other thing too that we should, that I'll just take that opportunity to point out is that. To be a an educational assistant, you do have to have two years of either an associate's degree. Or, you know, many of them come out with a bachelor's degree or an equivalent training. So we're not hiring people that aren't. You have to be highly educated in order to be an an educational assistant. Or their licensure. So we're hiring people that have, you know, two years of education behind them. And so I think we do have to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, these are educate highly educated staff. That we're asking to work with our people and is thirteen fifty reflective of that skill?
They have two years. Don't you guys usually give them two years?
I believe the only ones that, since I've been here, the only one that we took into consideration was previous teaching experience. Not necessarily their other work experience.
Yes, for the teachers, do we not, the highest they can come in is on the seventh step, or at least that used to be. Is that still a thumb rule?
There is. We try to match. As close as we can. We we don't, you know, somebody comes in with twenty years, we don't put them down at the twenty spot, you know. They don't they don't come in necessarily at that level, but we try to match as best we can.
As to what they're making.
Yes.
Okay. So where you guys want to go on that?
Yes.
One more question, Jeff, I'm sorry. Regardless of what we do to this wage schedule, i- is there going to be a vote on CPI for the support staff? Or was that included in the teacher contract motion?
The the support, the support staff that are off the pay scale. That that are that are past that eighteen dollars an hour who over time have been given. Whatever the CPI was to the teachers, that that has been the past practice here. So anybody that's off of the salary schedule, I would continue to to follow that past practice and. And increase their hourly rate at at the CPI rate that you approve for the teachers.
That's what he's asking.
Okay, so if if we if we vote to not change the wage scale, wage schedule. The support staff will still get a CPI raise, just like the teachers will for next year.
If nothing, if nothing happens and they're on the salary schedule, they would get that next step if they have room to go. They would get that next step of fifty cents an hour. Anybody off the top end of the pay scale, and we have several that are off the top end of the pay scale. Would be, we would apply the CPI to their hourly wage and that would be their hourly wage increase. That would be the CPI.
Okay.
That's the way that schedule's set up, Doc.
I see, I see. Yep, thank you. Well. I think if. I think a fifty cent change is a reasonable compromise, so I'll move that we increase the wage schedule by fifty cents an hour.
Okay, anybody want a second then? And if not, that motion could die.
Isn't, aren't they going up fifty cents anyway with the step? So then you're saying you want to increase it fifty cents plus the fifty cent step?
That was that was only a suggestion by me, Tony, as a compromise.
Okay, so.
A second to Dr. Dunn's motion.
I need to understand that because we're, they they have a scale, so they go up fifty cents. Unless they're unless they're off the top of the scale getting it to one point eight. So are we voting to increase fifty cents instead of the dollar? They'll get their fifty cent raise on the step and then another fifty cents? Is that what we're doing?
Going from thirteen fifty starting to fourteen.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
So do you want to second Dr. Dunn's motion?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Yes, okay, so we have a motion and a second to increase the base from thirteen fifty to fourteen. Is there any other comments?
And and just one comment or question, Jeff, that's that's a price table about ten thousand then?
Yes, it would be somewhere in that area.
Correct.
Okay, alright.
So that's just increasing the starting salary only, correct?
Well, it increases the starting salary, but then everybody will move up that fifty cents because of the next. Theoretically, if you're on the bottom or close to the bottom, you will get a dollar. Instead of fifty cents. Other comments?
Okay, done. Lindsay.
No.
Deppus.
No.
Sullivan.
No.
Chambers.
No.
Yes.
Passing.
Yes. Motion was defeated. Okay, we'll move on to substitute staff wages.
Here we are, oh, somewhat on the low end of the scale. This is brought to the personnel committee and they recommend approval of changing our substitute teacher pay. We're looking to increase daily substitute pay by fifteen dollars per day. And our long-term subs by twenty-five dollars per day. The new rate would be a hundred and fifteen dollars a day for a sub. And after someone has been in our district for a total of ten days, they move to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. A long-term sub is going to be paid. The recommendation is a hundred and fifty dollars a day. So that would be someone. The best example I can give you for a long-term sub would be. If someone were to take family medical leave for the birth of a child or an adoption of a child and is out. For several weeks, we would hire a long-term sub, one person certified to teach in that area. We would pay them a hundred and fifty dollars a day. The other change, and there are several districts that are already doing this last piece. Any sub that in essence is kind of loyal to our district and comes back from one year to the next. Instead of having, instead of starting them over at the hundred and fifteen dollars a day. Till their tenth day and then giving them a hundred and twenty-five. We would start those people at a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. So we would start them at that ten-day mark. Because they have been in our district for several years and we have some subs. That are in that boat on a regular basis. They they are with us. Ten, twenty, thirty, forty days in the course of a year and come back year after year. And other districts are doing this and have increased their pay and. Angie Schubert's sitting here in the room and she can explain how difficult it is sometimes to find subs. So the I had recommended to the personnel committee and they recommend approval to the board.
And this is, we're not at the top. By any means of of subpay, we're kind of right in the middle. We were very low at at before we changed this. And this is pretty much in the middle of the road, I believe, right, Jeff? So. I move that we approve the substitute staff wages.
I've I've got a question before you seek a second. Is this included in the budget?
We put in a line item for substitute teachers. And we. We try to be. Maybe not necessarily fiscally conservative when we budget in that sub area because we never know how many subs we're going to need. So I can't say based on. An average number of days that that this dollar amount, this increase is put into that. Preliminary budget. But there is a line item for substitute teachers in that preliminary budget.
I got it. Thank you.
Yes. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Hey Mitch, how many how many? Average days do we need subs and have we averaged this out what it might be in a, say, an average year cost increase?
I'll turn this over to the substitute expert, Angie Schubert.
Oh my gosh. We have. Very few days that we don't need a sub. There is usually. At least. A sub in each building a day. At max, we have high-volume days. I send out alerts in advance. And those high-volume days are any days that are over twelve in the district. I'm not sure how many we've had this year already. I would say maybe four. Angie, if you're online, if you recall how many high-sub days, but those are days that are extremely hard to fill. Because other school districts are also usually trying to fill subs on those days.
And it might be days when we're sending teams of teachers someplace for a training. Or a presentation. So sometimes we. We create our own problems that way as well. So I mean, if you looked at, if you just said ten subs a day, you're you're talking about an extra hundred and fifty dollars. Times. However, many days, you know, and and ten would be a very high number. So you're looking at sixty dollars a day. We have, do you think we have four subs over a hundred days?
And just an average, just to compare numbers to numbers, if we had, say, a hundred days for the new increase and a hundred days for for the increase. And a hundred days for the old number, just just for just for figuring.
They're looking at probably in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars.
Just kind of a rough number.
Yes.
Okay.
I assume because we don't have a second, there's still room for discussion. Why why don't we compromise and say like ten dollars on the one end and twenty on the other? Why is it have to be fifteen and twenty-five?
Because it match it, it makes us go more to the middle than still stay at the bottom. Hundred dollars a day. I mean, really, a hundred dollars a day. I know that sounds like a lot, but that's one of the lowest subpays that there is right now. A a lot are a hundred, they start out at a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. That's why we picked a hundred and fifteen because it was kind of in the middle of, you know, it's not a hundred and twenty-five, it's not a hundred and ten, but it's a hundred and fifteen. Yeah, and then we go, and then if you did that, then your long-term would be a hundred and seventy-five dollars a day. There's there's some, there's one district, I think it was, might have been Riverdale. They pay two hundred and twenty-six dollars a day for a sub.
They have that much trouble finding them?
I don't think there's any down there. It's really hard finding subs. I mean, even like when I worked in Shelsburg Small School. We didn't have subs sometimes. They're just, they weren't there. And if I go to a district, if you're paying a hundred and Darlington's paying one twenty-five, I'm gonna go to Darlington. Most, you know, I mean, most of the times.
Well, if you divide out the. That rate on an hourly basis, Tony, it's at a hundred and fifty, I'm using a eight-hour day. Is a little less than nineteen dollars an hour. It's it's not, it's not a lot on a per-hour basis, I guess, to get somebody in there on call.
Right, and there, you know. You need somebody that has, can't pull them off the street. So you need somebody that has. Some extra education, just like our SEAs do, so.
I I understand.
I'll second the the motion.
When, I just got a question, Mitch. When, when, so when an employee calls in. Sick, I mean, if if it's a vacation, they 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 get that approved with you. Or if if it's a scheduled appointment or whatever, they get that approved with you and they call in sick in the morning, then then Angie has to scramble to find a sub, of course. Employees got so many sick days, correct? They they can use.
That is correct. And 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 a lot of times they'll put, they'll put their sick day, you know, if they know. I've got a doctor's appointment tomorrow, that they can put that in our. In our subsystem and it it kicks it out. In essence, it puts it online and and says to any of the subs, hey, there's a job open in Mineral Point. Do you want it? And and sometimes those subs can get filled in the evening or in the morning. There are other times when I was ready to head out the door and all of a sudden my two-year-old. Threw up all over the kitchen floor and there's no way I can go into work today. So I, you know, then I would call Angie. And then she's scrambling in the morning, trying to call people to line up a sub. Sometimes she's lucky and can land one. Other times. We have to try to fill it within in the building.
When when we have student teachers, just for an example out of Platteville. Are they able to fill in, Mitch? When, when we have student teachers, just for an example out of Platteville, are they able to fill in Mitch if they're not licensed?
They have to be. They still need supervision. So I would have to make sure that somebody would be in essence responsible for what's happening in that classroom. So if, if it were, if I were gone and I have a student teacher, if, if somebody else had a free period, they would be in essence responsible for kind of checking in to make sure things are going okay in that room.
All right. And I just thought of another question. When you pay these subs, is there withholding out of their checks then, state and federal?
Yes, there would be.
Okay. And when they get over, how many, how many days would they have to work in a year, in a year's time before you need to offer them benefits?
They're, they are in essence like an at-will.
A certain number of hours per week, so we don't.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not over any thresholds that would require benefits in any way.
Oh, none of the subs get, none of the subs get benefits?
Correct.
Okay.
What about a long-term sub?
No, they do not. Their, their, their hours worked still stay under that limit.
Hey Tony?
Yes?
Did you say, did you say that this increase will keep us in the middle of the pack? Is that what you said earlier?
Probably around the middle, yeah. We won't be as low, we won't be in that lower part, we'll be up above that.
And I, I, I understand the, the need for it. I'm not going to be ignorant to the fact, but is increase in it by $15 a day, is that going to help get us teachers in an emergency?
I think it will. I think it'll be better because, you know, when you're talking 10 bucks, you know, that's not a big deal. But when you're talking 25 bucks, that's a big deal, especially if you slept for a week, you know?
I was just, I was just talking to the emergency deals like Mitch was talking about.
Yeah, I think it'll help us a lot.
Okay.
I just want to reiterate what Tony's saying. For those of you who weren't at the Personnel Committee meeting, we hashed this out for a good 20, 30 minutes. We talked about what other districts are paying, how hard Angie struggles to get subs. And we decided that this was a reasonable compromise. So it, it, it wasn't without a lot of discussion.
Okay, let's call a question, please.
Doll.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Douglas.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Basting.
Yes. We'll move on to health insurance.
The health insurance increase is 5.5% this year. The district had entered into a, a two-year agreement. Last year, we had looked at potentially another provider. We, we had been in a very unusual situation in previous years where we were at a 0% increase. And then reality really set in and, and the health insurance increase was going to jump considerably a year ago. So we brought in another company to compare. And Dean Insurance had come back and was able to lower the increase due to some of the wellness things that the district employees had been doing. And we had, we had agreed to the percentage increase a year ago with a guaranteed rate lock of no more than 5.5% for the second year, which is the year that we're in currently, or are going to be in. We have had several claims that were very high, that actually would have pushed our health insurance premium increase higher than the 5.5%. Some unforeseen health scares and health concerns and, and surgical needs that, that hit our staff this year that, that have the insurance. And the, had we not had the lock, they were looking at probably closer to an 8% insurance increase for next year. But with, with the agreement that there wouldn't be any higher than 5.5%, no change to the insurance at all. The Personnel Committee had recommended approving that insurance proposal with a 5.5% increase.
So I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
I'll second.
Any other comments or questions?
Again, a question Jeff, you, does anybody know what that amount will be roughly?
About 122,000.
Are you just going off the benefits on, on the budget comparison Jeff?
Yes, I am.
But doesn't that include retirement? I don't think, I, I don't think it'll be that much.
I don't think we really have much choice though, do we?
No, we don't.
I didn't think so.
No choice.
5%, 5.5% is pretty reasonable though. I mean.
It really is.
And Tony, we've been really fortunate in our district. There were years where we didn't have a single increase at all.
Yeah, like we were poor.
There was, yeah.
Unfortunately, it does catch up with you.
Just, just for historical context, it, it does seem smart in hindsight that we locked in two years with this limited rate increase that's saved us. And it's gonna, it's gonna bite us next year, I'm sure.
Well, at that point then Doc, we could go out and bid it out again.
That's my assumption.
Get a two-year lock or three-year lock?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to continue to be creative with it, but I think for this coming year, we're, we're fortunate, I think.
And I see that went in front of the Personnel Committee also.
Yeah, like Gary said, it was really more of an FYI than anything else. I'm surprised we even have to approve this. Because I think, I think we basically approved the two-year contract last year.
Yeah, I think you're probably right Doc. I cannot find file, but I can easily email Liz Danenberg and get that information tomorrow. Dr. Dunn brought up an RSD employee. This is a two-year. Why, why do we even need to vote on this? Because it would have been approved last year. We really even need to. I don't, I think he's right.
Yeah, nothing would change.
So we're just going to, we're not gonna vote on this. Because I agree that Dr. Dunn is correct that this was voted on last year. So it's just an FYI.
Sorry.
So let's move on to First Student Bus Contract.
Shortly after schools were shut down by the state, Andrew Peterson from First Student reached out and said he's been trying to contact all of the school districts they serve, knowing situations we might be in, was asking if the school would be willing to continue paying the bus company. And his, his request was to pay the, basically the home-to-school route payment on a per-month basis. First Student, you know, certainly working with Todd at First Student, they've always been, they've been good to us. You know, and I said, you know, and he was hoping I could make a commitment. And I just said, you know, this is a board decision committing continued dollar amounts to First Student. And I said I would bring it to the school board. Then I shared the, the bus contract with Shayna Lewis and gave my interpretation of the contract saying, we're only really required to pay for services rendered. And she responded after reviewing the bus contract and said, I'm, I was correct. We are not required to pay for anything other than any service that they provide to us. Then the next day, I received an email. So, so quite honestly, I was prepared to say, you know, this, this would be a, a pretty good cost savings to the school district. If, if we choose not to pay for services we're not getting. Then the next day I got an email from Shayna and then about three other emails. One of them I shared with you from Jamie Nutter at CISA who talked about, you know, looking at any of the bus drivers and any of the people that help run the companies in our areas being taxpayers, being out of work, so on and so forth. And that the National Transportation Council has somehow got a sympathetic ear in Washington so that the money, the economic stimulus monies that are being sent out and the monies that are earmarked for education, part of the language says you need to try to help maintain your contractors. So with First Student being a contracted service, the language does not necessarily say you, you need to pay them the full amount. But it says if there is a way to make some payments to them in order to help them maintain people on their staff. You know, it, it's hard in Mineral Point because none of our bus drivers are, you know, driving the city buses or they're not driving, you know, charter buses for people taking tours. And then the following day, there was kind of conversation around, not sure what kind of consequences there might be if you don't try to at least maintain some kind of support for the contracted services in your district. So on, on average, we're paying probably close to, if it were just the, the bus routes, it's probably close to, I would say between 28,000 and 30,000 a month. Obviously, April and May would be more expensive for us with varsity baseball games, JV baseball games, varsity softball games, JV softball games. Golf tends to take vans, track. Most of the time, if it's southwest of here, the Dodge O bus would pick us up. Very rarely do we provide a bus for a track event. But and if you remember, we, we buy the gas for the buses. So right now, we are not, we're not laying out any money for gasoline expenses right now. So I'm not, I'm not inclined to say I feel comfortable offering to pay for a student that $28,000. There, there may be a time when we are going to need, in essence, a favor from First Student. So I think maybe a portion of that might be reasonable, maybe half of that dollar amount might be reasonable.
Mitch? Yes? What are the, do you know what other school districts are doing?
Um, at, at this point in time, I do not have any firm commitments. I've had a lot of, we're going to be talking about this at our upcoming board meeting. This is on our board agenda. But, but because we are a week ahead, I've not heard what other schools are planning to do other than take this agenda item to their boards.
I'll say this much. The fact that we, we voted to pay the support staff for those two weeks there. I think if we don't support the First Student Bus Company and the drivers in some way, shape or form, I think it looks bad on us that we support one and not the other.
I got a question. Would it count as a credit if they're not actually providing the services?
We're not paying.
Well, I know that, but if we did do something, would that count as a credit for the future?
I could certainly ask for that, ask that question for you.
See, it's sort of like trying to help them out. I understand what Gary's saying, but it's like paying for, for something you're not getting. So why wouldn't they say, oh, well, we'll count that as a credit to the future? Does that make sense?
Yeah. And Gary, we are paying the support staff, but the support, most of support staff are still working. They're helping with virtual learning, I think. Am I correct Mitch?
Now they are, yes. There were, there were the two weeks where we, you had agreed to pay, but yes, now, now they are back working, supporting students with IEPs, teaming with teachers in, in some preparations and things. So yes, those, those assistants are now back to working. But you know, in First Student's bid, they bid the contract based on X number of days in the school year. And, and you know, kind of figured out, okay, what's it gonna cost us for running the routes, paying our drivers, insurance, you know, all of those kinds of things. They kind of figured that into that, to that billing. Obviously for them, some of those costs have gone away. And you know, I, I'm not in the government's position to say yes or no to, to anybody, but I do know there are programs, grants, loans, opportunities that small businesses can apply for through the federal government due to the stoppage. And again, there's no guarantee that, that First Student would receive one of these. And they're obviously a much bigger company than just the Mineral Point bus service that they provide to us. And again, you know, i- i- is there a good faith effort? They have been, they have been good to the district. And, and, and I would, I would want to couch that statement around, again, when I, when I talk about First Student, in my mind, I, I think Todd Schmitz and our local buses. And I, and I think of all the positive things that Todd and the bus drivers have done for us. Last minute, we need this trip. Hey, we're, we're running this kind of a drill. Hey, can you, you know, pick us up here, drop us off there? And they have been excellent to work with, you know, from our local standpoint. So I'm very supportive of, of what they have done and how supportive they have been for us. But again, I look at, when I, when I think First Student, I think of the bus barn here in town and, and Todd who runs it.
If we knew all the money was, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead Nate.
I was just gonna say, if we knew all that money was gonna go to drivers and the bus barns and everything else, but that's where I think percentage, you know, might, might be fair. But I don't think it's a full amount saying, yeah, you're, you're doing all the services that we've contracted and we can't pay them that amount. If I don't go to work, I don't get paid. That's just the way it is.
I got, I got a couple of questions Mitch.
Yes.
We just resigned with First Student last year and that was a multi-year contract, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
This is a year, one of five years.
Okay. My second question. Okay. My second question is, and I'm, when you were talking to sound cut out for a little bit, but what I'm wondering is, is First Student, you know, applying for any, I don't know how big their company is, but are they applying for any kind of grant money through the stimulus or any kind of small business association? Grants to help with this, you know, lack of revenue for these few months?
That I do not know. Andrew Peterson, like I said, called me back in March when the, when the governor had come in and said, we're closing schools down and it was, it was in that window where the governor had said, we're gonna, we're shutting schools down until potentially the 6th of April. So that, that's when I kind of got that call from him asking, you know, if this extends out, you know, for any length of time where we're not, you know, you're not in school and, and we're not providing a service, would the district be willing to, you know, provide some kind of financial support as a show of good faith? So I don't know if they want any grants.
Did, did First Student say whether, whether these bus drivers that aren't driving, whether they're filing for unemployment until the buses run again?
They did, he did not share that with me at that time. Again, at that time, he was, we were looking at spring break was in there, so it was going to be basically two weeks of school and the week of spring break. So the bus drivers would not have been paid for that week of spring break. So he was just looking at, at that time, two weeks of, of no bus transportation. And, and the comment was, if this goes longer, and at that point in time, I don't know if any of the bus drivers were thinking about filing for unemployment at all or not.
But let's say it does go longer. What I'm sensing is that, you know, our, our main concern is taking care of our local bus drivers and Todd, who's our local, you know, manager, I don't know what his official job title is with the company, but and I, I'm not, like to Nate's point, I, I'm not totally convinced that if we give First Student the money that any, any local people are going to get any of it, you know. So is it, is it, is it a possible option if this draws out, let's say schools, to spend indefinitely for the, you know, for the rest of the school year? You know, to Gary's point, how we supported some other, other support staff, can we, can we pay the local bus drivers directly? Let's say, say two weeks pay, something like that, with, and without even paying First Student?
They're not our employees, so I'm not quite sure how we would end up going about doing that. You know, because they're, they're all contracted through First Student.
If we, if we're paying them and they're collecting unemployment, that probably wouldn't work though, would it?
Correct. You know, that there is the, the push to maintain as many people and their pay as possible. Now, obviously, you've probably seen the same unemployment numbers reported on TV that I have, so obviously, that's not happening in too many locations when, you know, unemployment filings are in the tens of thousands on a monthly basis. You know, in, in theory, you would pay First Student who would then turn around and pay their bus drivers, even though they're not driving, but, but I don't know, you know, once, once we sign the check and send it, we don't get to say what happens to that money anymore. So I, I don't know that it would actually come back to any of our bus drivers or to anybody locally. I, I don't know that. And I don't know that First Student could guarantee that.
To move this along, Mitch, what I, maybe an option would be to, to go back to First Student and you yourself broker a deal with them. And then you can find out if the school district pays for a student, will they pay their drivers? I would imagine if the drivers that are going to sign up for unemployment, they probably already have and and maybe they're happier doing that. I, I, I don't know. But to write, to approve 30 or 36,000 tonight, I think would be very foolish because we, we don't know what they're going to do with the money. And I know they have overhead and they have interest and depreciation, fixed costs, but hey, we're all hurting. There's not, there's not a person in this world that's not hurting. And just because you're part of a public school system, does that mean that you know, you're guaranteed a check? No. So I, I think it's premature to do anything tonight.
I'll make a motion that we table this First Student Bus Contract discussion until the next regular meeting.
I'll second that.
And we, we want to, we want to remain good clients of First Student. I, I don't want to rock the boat there at all, but and then you can, you can research other school districts too, Mitch. You know, board meetings are taking place now and we can all maybe bounce ideas off of one another and come up with a fair compromise, a kind of throughout, throughout Southern Wisconsin, what they're going to do with the transportation companies.
Just to clarify, the only reason I would second the motion to table this is because I would like some kind of clarity as to just how much our people in Pointer are getting. Like everybody else said, I don't want that money just going away from the district. Maybe it's just not possible.
I will reach out Mr. Peterson tomorrow and, and see what kind of information I can get from him.
Okay, we're going to call a question.
To table the discussion until next regular meeting.
Correct.
Dr. Dunn.
Dr. Dunn?
You're asking for my vote? Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Deppes?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Doll?
Yes.
Basing?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to the English Arts Position.
Yep, I just want to say, if Mitch wants to call a committee meeting beforehand to to hash out some kind of negotiation deal or something, you know, I'd, I'd be open to that as well. I don't know if that would be personnel or operations or what.
Oh, yeah. Operations, sounds good.
Yeah, I will call First Student and we'll get a operations committee lined up. Um, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about potential needs, the size of the student population, the grade levels in the seventh and eighth grade and needs for additional supports. And it was brought up the possibility of hiring an English language arts teacher that would work both in the middle school and in the high school. So it would be a full-time position and it would, it would be in the English Language Arts. Unfortunately, you know, when you get into that seventh and eighth grade level, it is now subject-specific. An elementary teacher could teach any subject at, at a grade level in, in that grade span, but but once they get into that seventh grade area, it is, it is very subject-specific. I know Mr. Austin and Ms. Doll are both online. I would invite them to, to share their thoughts around the, the need behind this position.
I'll go first. With the sections increasing at both the seventh and eighth grade level to three sections of our academic classes. We've had to do that in the past and, and this year, our seventh graders were running three sections. And we've had to use Chris McCoy to help us out by teaching two reading classes. And that obviously takes Chris out of her other position, which is our library and media specialist, but she also goes into the classrooms and will do some co-teaching with our students. This new position will not only enable us to add that extra ELA section, but also help us with our reading program, including a reading intervention.
Yeah, and I would echo those thoughts that obviously, you know, right now, the seventh grade is in three sections. It'd be nice to keep those class sizes smaller. If we move to what we currently have with the seventh grade, there'd be two sections of 30-some kids in those eighth grade classes and then the three sections, seventh grade. So obviously, breaking it up, we get about 20 kids per class, both at the seventh and eighth grade level. And then it gives us that added benefit at the high school level where we can, we're looking to rearrange some of that English structure and stuff to maybe offer a couple of other classes, to get a little more reading intervention at the middle school, high school, and try to open up some opportunities. Both of our English teachers have talked to me about it quite a bit on how we'd like to kind of broaden our scope of what English kind of looks like at the high school level. And this will really allow us to do that because we'll be, we'll have more capacity to teach, I would say.
If memory serves me right, was English not one of our lower scores in the, in the middle school?
Yeah, yeah, not.
Not bad, but.
Not bad, but, yeah.
Do you have this position in the budget comparison, Mitch?
An additional position is not in there. But as I did say, in the salaries, we have three retirees, their salaries are in that salary expenditure. All three of them are at the top end of the salary schedule. So i- if we replace them with teachers with less experience, there will be some salaries, there'll be some savings. You know, in a perfect world, I could make that a wash. I could hire four people for the cost of the three that are retiring as far as their salaries are concerned.
I'm going to, we approve the posting for this position.
Second.
20.
Any other comments?
Approving the posting, does that mean we're approving the position? Does anybody want to chime in? I mean, will Mitch hire this person and bring it to us to approve it or will we have more discussion on this?
I would assume, I would think we should approve hiring the position. So we need to post it to hire, so.
And I agree with, I, if that's what we're going to do, Tony, if, if, according to the agenda, it says posting for the position, but we're not, if we're going to post it, we may as well.
So maybe we can.
Have a discussion now, whether to have or not.
Or we can tweak the motion to hire and post the position for the English Language Arts Middle School, if that's all right with Dr. Dunn.
I would make.
The only question I have, Mr. Austin, is how much, how much time will there be for this person to work in your high school?
So I, Mitch and I sat down and Vicky, we all sat down and kind of looked at this the other day. Right now, we're looking at basically, the teacher would teach four sections of middle school. A couple, so probably two sections in the high school. Whether that's a English nine or whether that's something else, we're not really sure yet, but something, two sections at the high school. And then some reading intervention at the middle school, high school, depending on what our needs are. So, I mean, in reality, we get, we get a pretty good benefit from it. Obviously, in a year and a half, two years from now, that may shift to maybe four sections of the high school and at the middle school. It could shift around. I think that person, whoever we hire, needs to understand that. But I think right now, we're getting some added benefit if we can decrease the workload of our other English teachers, which is where you're going to save some money too, I would say. Because that money that is there is going to go to those, this person. We're not going to be on overload necessarily.
And an applicant, an applicant can be licensed for middle school and high school at the same time?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. I don't have anything else, Jeff.
Okay, we're going to call a question then.
Dunn?
Yeah.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Deppes?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Doll?
Yes.
Basing?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to Business Services.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep.
You're welcome.
I'm going to make a motion for the credit card. I move that we approve the credit card and bills payable.
I'll second that.
So Doll? Any comments or questions?
The question I have, Jeff, is in, under the First Student line item, is that for February busing, Mitch, or is that, is that for March busing?
I want to say it was February, but I did it in the, what, what page? Do you remember, Larry?
It's on 30.
Thank you. That's March payment. Sorry, it was, yeah. So it was for the March bill.
Okay, so they, they will get paid for, well, we were in school up through, oh, what day was it, Dr. Dunn, of middle March?
March.
13, okay.
The, the bill is start, the bill starts February 23rd and ends on 3/13. The March 13th, that Friday, was the last day we had students.
Okay.
So there were almost, just about 27,500 in regular routes. And then the rest were extracurricular and athletic trips. $100 in athletic trips, the rest were extracurricular trips. Field trips, thank you, Angie. So you know, you, so you're going to be right close to that dollar amount without any athletics. Okay.
Anybody else?
Just, just a comment on, on bills coming in now, Mitch. I mean, things, things must be really slowing up. Just as an example, meetings or conventions outside the school, none of that's taking place. We, we must be saving, saving some money, I guess. Is, is there, is it fair to ask how much per month the district is saving right now per month without having kids in the school minus the transportation cost?
I, I don't know that I could, I don't know that I could give you that amount. You know, we could, after next month at this time, I would be able to tell you, like, here's what our electric bill is, or heat bill, or utilities bill, so I would, I would give you an idea of what that would be. Obviously, if we do nothing with First Student, we're going to, we're going to save that 27, $28,000 for two months of payments to First Student. You know, so I mean, yeah, there are, there are, yeah, every, every place you go, you know, this training, that training, everything. If it's not on a webinar anymore, that, it's been canceled. So, you know, there are a lot of things, no, no more field trips, none of those kinds of things are taking place. So there is a cost savings to the budget without a doubt.
I understand. And another big expense for the district is our food service. What's happening there, Mitch?
Nancy is providing, providing lunches and breakfasts. Because we filed for a program. Because we filed for a program, anybody that is under 18, and this is anybody, does not have to be a student that was receiving a free or reduced lunch rate, they all receive a free lunch. We're being reimbursed for those lunches being served. And initially, we, we had it only as a walk-up the first week. They, they, we have lunches down at the elementary school already, ready to go. And either students could walk to the elementary or a parent could drive up and, and pick up the lunch for their student. And then we were able to reach out, any families that are out in the country, they were able to fill out a form saying, yes, I would love to take advantage of this. So we have been making some trips out into the country to deliver some of those meals to some of those families that have asked for it. So right now, she's getting to a schedule where Mondays, Wednesdays, for sure, I don't know if it's Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, but on Monday, she will deliver multiple lunches and multiple breakfast meals. And then Wednesday, she can deliver multiples, again, that the state has allowed that because the state requirement used to be, in order to, in order to get any funding, you, it had to be, I think they've called it communal lunches. Everybody had to come into one spot and eat that lunch in one spot. And, and due to the virus restrictions, they have waived those kinds of things. So we can, we're getting reimbursed for the meals that we're providing. And we're providing those meals for free.
Very good. Then the rest, the rest of the lunch program then Mitch, has been, just been shuttered then? Or, or will there, will there be a cost to the district to the food service vendor?
There will be some cost there. I'm not anticipating it will be the same. I mean, we have, there's still, excuse me. You know, there's still Nancy's time. She, she is using whatever help she can get. She's offered up to have at least two Tahoe employees come in, but she's also allowing any other support staff or teaching staff that wish to help can come in and help as well. So there is some expense. But I would anticipate those bills not being the same as they have been.
Sure. And it, it may kind of play into the negotiations with the transportation vendor also, you know, what we're doing with our food service vendor.
Correct.
Thank you Mitch.
On the bills for credit card?
Hey Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yeah.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Deppes?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Okay, the next meeting for you gentlemen will be April 27th at 6:30 and your May meeting is the 11th. And this is my last official meeting. I want to just say thank you to all you guys and I figure roughly 75 other people that I've served with over the 18 years. It's been a true honor working with every single one, especially you guys, so thank you. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Thanks for all the work Jeff.
Thanks for your service.
We appreciate your work Jeff.
Hey Jeff, I think the election got pushed back though.
It did, April 17th.
Did it?
I think so. They're trying.
Mail-in, the mail-in votes, if you're mailing, you can mail in until April 17th. Tomorrow is in-person voting.
Well, it's your April 17th, but I won't be here for the 27th.
They actually canceled the April 17th. Yeah.
I thought I got the-
Get your absentee ballot in by tomorrow. Yeah, the state Supreme, the, the US Supreme Court changed it.
Darn.
Yeah, I believe that's right. I believe it has to be, your absentee ballot has to be postmarked by tomorrow in order for it to be counted in this election.
And they called in the Wisconsin National Guard to assist with polling and absentee ballots. My son-in-law was activated yesterday.
Oh wow.
So I think I heard 90, 95% of the guards in the state are now active to assist in their county with polling.
At Midler Point, you get to drive up, drive through.
We have a motion.
We have a motion.
Okay.
To adjourn. Somebody?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I would do a roll call, just so, so you know who's-
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Deppes?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Bassing?
Yes.
All right, thank you everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks again Jeff, see ya.
Taking care everyone.